Start halfway.
Oh, yeah, six fifteen in time.
Okay. So, whenever you're ready, Sean.
Okay, that's up. Let's call an order the September twenty twenty two Victorian Village Commission hearing. Today is the nineteenth, actually. So, next business meeting will be Wednesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. That's at twelve noon at one eleven North Front Street, second floor, room two oh four, which is this room. Our next hearing date will be Wednesday, October twelfth, twenty twenty two, at four P M. One eleven North Front Street, second floor, room two oh four, same square as half.
Kimberly, grant me the E W D Storm Preservation Officer.
Do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Perfect. Introduction of Commissioners President, Melinda, if you can go first.
Melinda Shaw.
Reed Sprite, Jeffrey Assel.
Sean Conyers. So we do have a form. Kimberly, any overview of hearing format, what protocols, or anything you want to go through?
So, just a quick note, I know this is a little bit of a delayed meeting for anybody who is continuing or conceptual at this hearing, you have a week from today, to submit to be on the October agenda. So the October agenda is going to be a little getting out to the Commissioners.
Understood.
And no public for today.
No problem. Awesome, okay. All right. An approval of staff approvals.
So if you want to give the motion, and then we can run through any objections.
Okay, let's do a motion first.
No motion.
Motion for staff approvals. A second?
A second.
For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Kimberly, go ahead for any objections.
All right, if you'd like to follow along, it starts on page eight of the agenda with seven one seven Denison Avenue, two ninety two to two ninety six West First Avenue, seven forty Neil Avenue, three, four, five, West Second Avenue, and eight seventy Denison Avenue rear. And those are all the staff approvals.
Approval of the minutes from the August tenth hearing.
Make a motion to approve.
Are there a second?
Second.
Any discussion at all? Cast a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. So Kimberly, get back over to you.
All right, we're going to start with application number one, which is fifty-four West Third Avenue. The applicant wants to come when we need the staff support here, what you can do so. This application is to reconstruct a one-story porch at the front of the house. It would have their approximately nineteen feet six inches deep by eight wide by ten foot. We have a solid black roof. The proposed board would have its new old denture detail on it. The report also has these top garden on the east side of the roof. And the full just to be clearly people from home ground and protect the cap. The existing land is to be removed from these elevations. Commissioners have been insisting requesting confirmation on the columns that would be constructed out of which the applicant had their people when they would. They also requested detail of the capitals and bases of the columns. The applicant was to wish to be of staff to find the latest details and material of the details are appropriate. Could be moved to a staff approval based on staff discretion, which I have not received those quite yet. And the applicant has addressed previous questions and concerns from the last hearing. Staff does recommend approval of the application. Would have any clarifications to be submitted to the staff for review approval or additions of this certificate? As noted in the business meeting, specifically the details of the capitals and basis of the columns. Basis for staff recognition, the city code thirty-one sixteen one eleven, these standards for alteration.
Thank you, Kimberly. Did you state your name, did you swear in, sir?
Yeah, my name is Kyle Blutton.
Did you tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, awesome. Anything to add to the presentation?
No, so you have to make a clarification, so I don't keep showing up here, I guess. So, they're looking, she's looking to do like corbels, actually at the top of the posts. I think I sent a picture, something like that.
Yeah, I thought it was just for the color.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Well, it's a color, but also general. She said that to me as far as what the corbel is kind of style she was looking for. Yeah. So the capitals. So I guess I just want to get clarification as far as working with the H B O staff. And that would be now to go back.
So she's looking to do this on the engaged and all the free posts.
Yeah, so there was some earlier rendering that didn't really show quite everything as far as the actual construction. They weren't architectural documents. Do you still have those old renderings, Ben James?
I do, but they are not included in these materials.
Gotcha, okay.
I do remember they had kind of the battered or tapered kind of base to it.
Yeah, they have the tapered base, and then they have these corbels at the top of the posts. It was still kind of, it wasn't all exactly right there. We just wanted to kind of go in front of you guys first and get a good idea of what it will accept, and then pick our selections from there.
Yeah, I just kind of thinking about when we were looking at the elevations in the business meeting. We were just a question mark in terms of columns. Right now, the columns are just showing us kind of standard posts. And so we were just trying to understand what that detail was like and how they were articulated.
Yeah, I wish the posts were just a little bit more articulated versus doing that. The corbel thing.
So, do corbels?
No, I think that, I think the post could just be trimmed down a little bit more to give a definition of the top and a definition of the bottom versus doing this piece that's going to repeat.
Gotcha, absolutely.
And it also, what's nice about this house is if you look at the roof line, you see those. So it's, it's making your eye go up and down versus seeing something and then seeing another detail above.
Gotcha.
So just kind of thinking out loud, and Melinda, is there anything else, Melinda?
I guess I'd like to see a section or a detailed elevation of the column showing how these corbels and dimensions of them, because they can range in size from just being.
Well, I don't think we should, I don't think they should have them. I think that they should just be trimmed out, because I think it'll be, we're always working on this porch. It was a little over the top, but now it's undercooked. And I think there's a sweet spot there, but I don't think the corbel is what's going to get it.
I tend to agree with you, but not knowing where they go or how big they are.
Yeah. So, I think if they're really crazy about wanting these, then we need to see a picture. I would be more in favor of just trimming out the column.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So this, this is kind of interesting. So just kind of thinking about, because I know that was the question mark. And so if we were to kick it over to staff, for staff.
Or would we want to do a subcommittee review?
That's perfect, so.
Well, I mean, and then I don't even know how those two things interact. I've never seen that detail before.
There needs to be a detail of that.
I mean, my thought on this is if it's just being trimmed out, then it could probably go to us to have approval. But if she wants the corbels, then we're going to want to see something that shows how that all works together.
So can we go ahead and say we're mixing the corbels? And then we'll put together a good appropriate trim package, I guess, for the porch?
Yeah. And that could go, yes.
Okay.
That could do, that's fine.
That's perfect.
Is that someone want to make a motion?
I'll go for it this time, isn't it? You're going to have to do this all night.
It's number?
Yeah, it's on the train again. Thank you. Motion on application V B two two oh nine zero zero four fifty-four West Third Avenue to send it to staff approval pending details on the trim work for the base and the top of the posts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hopefully, we won't see it. I want to feel it and you love there, that's what I just said. Here was the chance.
And this is a heads up, I'll probably require skills and measure drawings, just so we know how it's all of that. And that'll help me understand the details as well, but I will reach out.
Okay, that's what I asked. So you'll reach out to me and start?
Yes, yeah, I'll start, I'll send you a letter, because
Okay.
I'll be something for the approval, and then we'll work it out.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for your patience.
Yeah, you got it.
Thanks for the help.
And agenda item number three, with through their, their application, they are requesting you to walk over.
Okay, yeah, so we're on four.
Yes, so the number four is three five six to three five eight Little Bridge Avenue. This application is true to the existing windows that's done with a placement Anderson four hundred series with right triple front windows for the Anderson E series double front windows to fit in the existing openings. There are places the front doors with Simpson solid wood two-panel half paper door. Rear doors to be replaced with the thermature smooth star fiberglass two-panel door with lamp view. Side doors to be replaced with the four-panel thermature smooth star fiberglass door. The running rear doors would have the storm screen with transom replaced with a solid glass transom to fit the opening above the doors and replace the storm doors. I've included the Commissioner comments from the July thirteenth hearing. Commissioners at the business meeting have requested cut sheets for the Anderson windows. I believe that was at the previous business meeting. H B O staff did complete a site visit a number of months ago. Staff supports replacement on the third floor windows and both front doors. All window sills have experienced water damage and do need replaced. Not all of the storm windows have weep holes. The windows on the first and second floor have deterioration on the bottom stashes. This is minimal on the overall rails and stashes are solid. Windows do require replacing and most are missing their ropes. The rear and side doors have minimal wear damage, deterioration, and retention repair is recommended. The Commissioners previously discussed seeing the Anderson four hundred windows, which were used as a test case in the certain resources conditions I agree with the H B O staff provided photos of the windows, which were installed just on the side of the house, sides still appearing wood. The styles and rails on those windows are a little too thin, and staff does not find the test case successful. The applicant gets a plug cut sheet for the Anderson E series. And H B O staff has reviewed the file. There's been no application for window or for maintenance. Staff recommends one of two options here. Either continuing to allow the applicant more time to research for new repair contractors or approval of the application of the conditions that first and second floor windows are changed and repaired. The third floor windows are replaced within the chosen from the approved list. And the side and rear doors are retained and to restore it. Basis for recommendation are Victorian Village guidelines for windows and doors. City code thirty-one sixteen eleven, the standards for alteration, as well as the amendments to the city of Columbus, those architectural review guidelines for window replacement and door replacement.
Thank you, Kimberly. Can I state your name, guys, and get you off the morning here?
Gary Backing.
Jim Stewart.
Perfect. Do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, just go ahead and present your thoughts based upon staff's presentation.
The last time I was here, it seemed like everybody was generally in favor of replacing the doors. We had a long discussion about, about that last time. And I think what was, what the commission focused on at that point was doing the half-life doors instead of the solid doors on the front back. We presented the half-life doors in the packet. Hopefully, those are acceptable. You have questions, and I'm happy to answer those. The, for all the reasons we said in the last, in the last hearing, there's nobody that's replacing or repairing those doors, and they're in very bad shape. I think that's why the last time it appeared as if most of the commission liaison was prepared to do a long replacement of the doors. You have questions upon the door, and happy to, to answer those.
I just got to thinking about the history related to this application, and I may be wrong, so I was going to ask. I think during that time, you know, there was a case that was fought through. There were some relationships to some adjacent properties and such. But then at that time, that was prior, probably prior to staff's site visit. Is that?
No, the first time we were here was after the staff's site visit.
Okay, after.
No, the staff's site visit on the Summit Avenue property for purposes of seeing the proposed windows.
Perfect, I just wanted to be sure.
Okay.
Yes, very helpful.
And I think, I think the staff told me that there was damage to, to the windows, to the doors. They've got coats and coats of lead paint on them. They've got all kinds of damage. They, they do not, they're not air tight, they do not close properly. And I have spent months and months trying to find a contractor that will repair those. They're just, they're just not there. Nobody wants to touch them for all the reasons, just some of those lead paint, the fact that they've got a lot of damage, the fact that there's not enough money in for them, because they'd have to charge too much to make that happen. And so they just, I can't find anybody that's willing to ask staff for a recommendation, and they don't have one either. So, you know, the other thing I would note is both on doors and windows. You know, yesterday I went to the Victorian Village tour, and there were a whole lot of brand-new doors and windows. In fact, almost all of them, brand-new. So I'd simply point that out, that there's, there's a lot of replacement. I'm trying to do this right. I'm trying to do it for security reasons, I'm trying to do it for safety reasons, energy efficiency reasons. I'm not doing anything wrong, and I'm trying to do this absolutely right. There's a lot of people on my name with brand-new doors and windows. My guess is they're not coming.
Do you have anything to add related to, just so we don't have to go back and forth? Do you want to add anything related to the windows as well?
Oh, absolutely. Again, last time we were here, it seemed like there was general consensus that some of the windows that they said were shot, and they are. The, they're the worst of them. But virtually all the windows have significant rot in both the sills and the jams. And there's just nobody that's going to repair them. I've had people talk to me who might be able to repair the, the sash. But that's it. The reglations work on sash, but they're not going to touch all the rock that's in the jams. And that's the significant part of it. Mostly, virtually all of the windows have rotten jams and, and the sills and in the sashes. They don't function, they're not safe, they're not energy efficient. Plus, they're hidden by these ugly storms. I don't see a few pictures. The proposal is to put in nice-looking windows and get rid of those ugly storms. Because storms are defective, they're doing damage to the, to the windows and to the existing windows, because they don't have, they were installed improperly whenever they were installed before improper. So, the only, you know, the issue that I thought was the commission had last year was whether or not we would use a window on the approved list or whether or not we could use the proposed Anderson window. And I proposed two different options. The four hundred series Anderson window, which is the one that was on the Summit property, and an E series Anderson window, which is virtually identical to the weather shield window on the approved list. I mean, in dimensions and everything, and he knows more than I do about that, he can tell you about that. But the point is that that window is virtually identical to the weather shield window. The impressions, we're happy to answer those. But these windows need to be replaced, because if they're not replaced, what's going to end up happening is they're going to get boarded up or something. Because they just can't be fixed. And, you know, what would you rather see? A nice replacement window that looks consistent with the original property? Or a boarded-up window? To me, it's not really a choice. So I, I think that they're all need to be replaced. Think we've proven that by the pictures and got somebody here who knows a whole lot about windows, and you've talked to about the condition of these windows, if you have questions.
Well, I'll just enter it. My only concern is, yes, you can repair windows. But what you don't see is what's underneath the windows from all of the deterioration, the moisture and the penetration. You've got rotten frames. So we seal that up and repair it, but you really haven't repaired the structure that's, oh, that's holding that window in place. And a lot of times with his properties, various properties throughout that area, you pull that out, you're going to have a dry-rotted timber on the sill that needs to be replaced. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you're replacing the sill that's directly underneath that. So repairing what's there, you know, you're just, you know, eventually it's just going to fall out. Because there's no structure to hold it.
But I doubt you'll have many renters if you put boards over your windows.
No.
I, I don't think that's a good economic.
But from a safety state.
I appreciate that, but right now they can't open them. There's a fire, they can't open them. If there's, there's real significant safety problems here. I'm trying to address them in a responsible manner, and I don't, I don't know any reason why I wouldn't be allowed to replace these. There's just no way to repair them and replace them in a responsible manner that's going to be consistent with the way the property was originally designed without the storm.
Very helpful. Any comments? So I'm just kind of thinking, obviously, we've got two components, we've got doors and windows, so.
Start with the doors?
Start with the doors, it's so much easier from that perspective, right? So I do want to just kind of, not necessarily cautious, but at least I think that when we think about the last two agendas, these two items, or there's been multiple very similar items that we don't mention from that perspective, so. So I see Reed shaking his head from that perspective, so I think the team remembers some of these. So let's start with the doors. So yes, so it looks like the recommendation is from staff is that we have the front door is fine in terms of replacement, but then I think the side and the rear door is what's being called out as being repaired.
So my question is, the ones that are being replaced, why are the new ones not matching the pattern, the panels of the historic doors? You're going from a four, a, a single light with three panels to a single light with two panels.
I'm not aware that I, that there's, I'm not sure who the picture is, but you have a picture of the
Number two, if you could.
The front door? That's, that's the slide.
It's slide five twenty-seven.
Action, that's.
It's a three-panel, they're all the same.
That's a three-panel, that's a three-panel. I didn't see any that were two-panel. They're going to be replaced, they need to be back, they need to match.
I'm not aware that there, there are any, at least what I've seen, but if, if it.
There are manufacturers that make ones that look just like this.
Okay.
With the three panels below?
Yes.
Yep, and if that was.
Do you know who those manufacturers are?
Not off the top of my head, but I know they exist, because I've specified them before.
Okay.
Are they wood, like Simpson or somebody like with the?
I've seen wood ones, I've also seen fiberglass ones, but high-quality fiberglass, not what you get at those.
Russia.
Restoration grade.
And if that would be the case, I would be okay with that.
Yeah.
So if we can match that door, you'd be in favor of replacing?
Yes.
Is that the, the front and the side and the back?
Yes.
Yeah.
Kansas Commission, I would be with the front.
Yeah, the side?
The side doors be, the side rear being fiberglass. It requires the front door to be wood.
That's right. Yep, yes.
And the side? We were proposing to the side door not be have you for security.
And I would be okay if it's a three-panel solid.
Yeah, but the panel.
Yes, yeah. If the design matched and it was solid, I would be fine with that.
Okay. And in, since this is a two-unit building, I would propose that we do the same thing on both sides. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Pretty consistent on that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move on to windows. It seems like the recommendation is that, you know, all the windows are replaced on the first and second floor. And then the only, I'm sorry, are repaired, and then the only replacement would occur on the third floor. So, but with that, we have two components. We have a four hundred series that is the test case that was at Summit property. And then also the E series that's being communicated, that is an identical match to the weather shield. I know that right now in our information, we only have the four hundred series. I don't remember seeing the E series.
Yes, sir.
I have been different.
It's page twenty-five.
With a different attachment, probably.
Which is page twenty-five.
What color are the walls?
What color are the windows?
It'd be a W one, there's fifty, I think we were proposing.
Well, the interior is wood white. The exterior, I think we said was a bronze.
So my one caution with, when it's a darker color, most aluminum clad windows have visible vinyl jamb lighters that only come in a cream or white color.
And.
You typically select the clad exterior liner.
Okay, so you.
So it's white on the inside, matches the frame color on the exterior.
Okay, so these are including that, because the details aren't.
No, that's, that's, most people would opt to go with the
Yeah, because they're.
Least expensive, which would be the plastic liner.
Yeah.
But you could select the actual color of the window to be a clad like.
Because the details aren't showing that.
We could specify that, though.
Yeah.
Can you just kind of offer some understanding of why the E series versus the weather shield? I mean, we've been.
Specifically, if, if you look at the E series is essentially a company Anderson bought for aluminum clad properties, very high check rails. I did a comparison, and welcome to, from a dimensional standpoint, compared to the weather shield. We're talking fractions of inches as far as where the lower rail, I think, is what your main concern is, because the four hundred series is so narrow at the bottom, whereas this one's very tall, because it has a pocket, like insert. And it's just a, you know, it just matches it perfectly with the, what's on the proposed list or approved list, so. And I'd be more than happy to bring in a sample for, you know, whatever you want to do for future reference, because it does have a lot of applications for both Victorian and other buildings, so.
So, that's one. So regardless of the product, let's, let's just kind of go, let's let the product go for a second. Let's just talk about, you know, just the whole, the idea of the replacement versus repair.
Yeah, so I'll jump in on that one. So, you know, I sympathize with the old windows. I have the old windows in my own home that always have the problems, right? Whether it's the rot, the painting, the sash cord breaking, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, we, we did have, staffs did go on a site visit, they looked at the windows and, you know, they, at least on the first and second floor, evaluated them as being, I'll say salvageable, that kind of puts it at a lower tier, but that they're, you know, they're sufficient enough worth keeping. Whereas we recognize on the third floor that that's not, doesn't make sense. And, you know, we are getting this question a lot, you know, about the windows, and everybody wants to, to, to do the replacements. And, you know, we've been, you know, toeing a pretty hard line on that one and saying, you know, if, if, if staff says that they can be repaired, and we don't see any evidence from either what we've been presented, that they can't be, then we're pushing to keep the original windows. So that would be, that would be my recommendation. I understand it's, it may be more costly, you know, replacing the sills, you know, you've taken, taken them all apart and doing it again, it's, it is costly, but it is, you're going to get another hundred years out of those windows.
And can I sponsor that, just very briefly? A couple things, number one, the pictures, I know you're kind of comparing this to bottles. As I think you said last time, this is not bottles, first and foremost. Second, if you compare the pictures between bottles and this. Second, if you compare the pictures between bottles and this, there's just no, there's no comparison.
I, I, we're not talking about another application like for like, it's just maintaining consistency in the information that we're asking from our applicants, the direction that we're getting from our staff, so it's not, we completely understand that, we're just trying to maintain consistency, so.
I mean, maybe, maybe the, you know, the, what we need is, you know, more evidence that these windows should be replaced, right? You know, if you can get us pictures showing rod damage, you know, things.
Survey window by window.
Yes, by window by window, that can, you know, can I, that can demonstrate that they need replacement, then I think we can, we can discuss that.
If I could find it, this isn't about cost, if I could find somebody that was capable of doing the work in the next couple of decades, surely do it, but you're asking me essentially to do nothing, which I, because there's nobody to do. And, and, and that's incredibly frustrating, this property, and especially when I see, like I said yesterday, the Victorian Village door, all new windows, everywhere. And all my neighbors are getting new windows. And you know, the secret seems to be, don't come here, because you won't be allowed to do it. And that's frustrating, and I'm just expressing my frustration, because like, these windows are damaged, I was with Kimberly when she went through, and the conversation was talking about the damage, but it can be repaired, well, that's fine, tell me who can repair.
Have you reached out to Columbus Landmarks, they made you an list of contractors?
Kimberly sent me that, there is no list.
I don't have the list, you'd have to reach out to them directly.
Columbus Landmarks.
On their website and I called them. I'd love to see the list, maybe, maybe whoever I spoke to was wrong. But I'd love, I'd love to see it, so maybe I'll try again. It wasn't on their website, because Kimberly sent me, said it was on the website, it was. So I called and they didn't have an empty website.
My understanding is they have someone in the left to come out and meet you at the property and go through the issues with whatever it is, whether it's your roof or your windows or whatever, to help recommend some contractors that can do that type of work.
No, I think, you know, this is a, it's a sticky wicket, because again, it's, in our times, do we have someone that can fix them?
For sure.
And is the end result that much different? Versus being able to put that effort in other things and in other projects, so I'm, I'm leaning towards there's a certain extent. And whether it's your fault, or it isn't your fault, or you haven't taken care of the property, you have taken care of the property, you know, there is a safety issue and there is a, you know, I get it.
That makes sense, I just kind of thinking, is there an opportunity to be able to, you know, look at that third floor? You know, with this alternate E-product, this kind of, kind of a step one while the ground floor.
I'm fine with that too.
Thinking like, you know, is there a way to be able to, I don't know, move forward with the, the areas that were?
Kimberly, how do test cases work with new window manufacturers?
She's been a while, typically, they're installed, about a year, you can go back and check on them, see how they weathered or longer. This case, because the HRC test case had been looked on. And so. And I will note, it's not something to get on the approved list, just because that would have to go through all five commissions.
Those are back there in village, that was pretty challenging during that time, so.
But I'm all in favor of that.
Yeah, just gonna think.
I think we need to move in that direction.
Yeah, so just thinking about the third floor, obviously is, you know, you proposed the E-series window, is, is that a possibility of being able to move forward with the third floor replacement? Utilizing the E-series as a test case? Probably, I would say, continue the balance of, of that, to kind of continue the balance of the window replacement, allow you to take some additional time to spend with the landmarks, see if there's an opportunity there. And then you could also, we would continue the doors, but I think you pretty much have direction over doors, so just trying to at least kind of move the application forward, but also taking consideration and recommendation from staff. Does that sound like something that would help the process and?
It would, it would, it's better than where I am today. Nobody lives on the third floor, it's an unfinished third floor, so it doesn't solve any of my safety issues or anything, obviously. Security issues, but yeah. That's what the commission's willing to do at this point, happy to take that, what I would really like is possible, there's a consensus on doors to approve those, if I may, before those with a condition that we, we do the windows, maybe.
We could do that.
At least get started on that.
Yeah, so that's perfect then, so we'll, what we'll do is just kind of thinking about the commission is, we'll just do A, B, and C. So we'll do the A, it'd be the doors, we'll be able to understand that, and the staff will be able to kind of review that from staff approval of the products. And then we'll kind of go through that, so it's just, if there's a motion for item A for the doors.
Yeah. Uh, motion for application twenty-two dash oh seven dash one eight three five eight bottles. And that's to replace the doors on both sides of the unit. The two front doors being three-panel, half-light, wood, and then the two side doors, three-panel, full, no half-light, and then the back is, again, the three-panel, half-light. And those can be fiberglass.
And then the front door has to be wood?
Yeah, I said the front doors, the two front doors are wood, the rest of them can be fiberglass.
Awesome, okay. Is there, and it's those products to be reviewed by staff?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Melinda, is there anything else you want to think? Okay, I see your processes, I'm just gonna be sure. Okay, that's great, I love, uh, anything else, we missing anything, right? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass, so that's item A, doors. So.
Next level up.
Windows, windows will be split into two.
Yes.
So whether the windows were easily, which are gonna be the second, I should say the first floor and the second floor, and those are gonna be continued for additional evaluation.
So make a motion for Victorian Village twenty-two dash oh seven oh one eight three five eight bottles avenue to be continued, so. The client can go to Columbus Landmarks and get some more information on vendors on how to repair.
Any, a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say, go ahead, sir, you was gonna say something, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did I miss the, the, the third floor?
No, no, that was everything. Just wanted to be sure, I saw you raise your pen, so perfect, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Then the third motion is for Victorian Village twenty-two oh seven oh one eight three five eight bottles avenue, and that would be the third floor windows to be, to be put in into a test case with the Anderson E-series. And that's the whole third floor. Yeah.
Anything that we're missing, Kimberly?
No.
Okay.
We have the specs for that in the package, the E-series.
Yeah, they're there. Yeah, we'll be, perfect, okay. Any other further discussion? And we had a second, right?
A second.
Okay, then. I just wanted to be sure, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will be using option number five, which is one eight two West Fourth Avenue. This application is the result of a court violation for work already completed, and it's to retain the Atlas Pinnacle Precinct shingle roof in Hartstone. The commissioners at last month's business meeting requested the fore眼睛of the roof. HBO staff has included photos from nineteen sixty-three and nineteen eighties. The applicant has applied other examples of similar roofs to the area, these examples likely were not approved. The approved shingles list was put together to allow residents of historic areas a more cost-effective replacement slate. The shingles on the list are meant to look similar in design and color to the slate, which would have historically been on the structures. The shingles that have been installed on the roof are designed to resemble wood shakes, which recent Columbus area did not have. The roof was installed without improvement or ceiling. Staff does recommend denying the application based on the city code thirty-one sixteen point eleven, specifically two, five, six, and the Victorian Village guidelines for roofs. Basis for recommendation is the city code standards for alteration and Victorian Village guidelines for roofs.
Thank you. Can you say your name for the record and get your sworn in, sir?
Well, we can do it for you.
Thank you, do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You have anything to, to add to?
Well, as was mentioned by previous gentleman, I, my roof needed repair in spring, and looking around in my neighborhood, there are several homeowners that have certain other roofs. And I honestly did not think that it was something that would need to be repaired. I hired a contractor and did it, I don't, my concern like this, is there are other groups in the neighborhood that are like mine, and my concern is that I am being asked to replace mine, but they have not.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thoughts?
My, I, I feel for you, and I feel that burden, but we're to the point where people do things and they ask for permission after, and it's becoming very prevalent within the commissions. And I, you know, I, I don't know what to say in this situation.
Well, I, yeah, I have been speaking with the authority about other repairs, but I bought the house knowing that we need to repair the down roof. And if I have to replace the roof, it is gonna have to push those repairs off as well, which I would run along too, because they don't need it. But if if you don't see your way to approving, you don't.
And, you know, you know, shame on the contractor. Knows that they should know it's a historic district, they don't know.
Be pulling a permit.
Yes. That's the first.
I mean, they are not doing you any favors by not following city code, which they should know.
Any other? Seems like it's pretty consistent in terms of.
Yep.
Following staff's recommendation. So, I mean, obviously it's, I mean, is there a, how do we, how do we go about this? Because it seems as though, I mean, it's just one solution, which would just be replacement in order to bring that back into compliance. So just gotta think if, it's really nothing else, just.
I know if it is a denial, to cross this bridge, you, the denial form is sent out within appeals application. So once a denial is sent out, and you receive it, if this is to go that route in the area, you've got ten days to appeal, and there's a couple different reasons for appeal that you can, due to changing unusual circumstances, financial option, financial is very difficult to prove though, but those are additional things that you could look at to consider if it does get denied.
So really the only thing that you do is just kind of vote on as submitted, and move the application forward in that manner? So, gonna get a vote, or I should say, I'm sorry, can I, can I get a motion to approve as submitted?
Uh, application, Victorian Village, application twenty-two dash oh eight dash zero one six one eight two West Fourth Avenue, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say aye?
Aye.
Motion back. So let me see here.
Reasons for denial.
Just gotta pull it back up again. So the basis of your staff recognition, so it would be CC thirty-one sixteen eleven. And then also the Victorian Village guidelines, number eight for roofs.
And for the standards for alteration, specifically the two, five, and six.
So say two, five, and six, or specifically?
And just for the record, I'm gonna give those out real quick.
Okay, no, thank you.
Two is the distinguishing characteristics of a property should not be destroyed, destroyed, the removal or alteration of any historic materials or distinctive architectural features should be avoided whenever possible. Five is distinctive stylistic features and examples of craftsmanship that characterize a property shall be treated with sensitivity. Deteriorated architectural features should be repaired rather than replaced whenever possible. In the event of replacement is necessary, the materials shall match the material being replaced. In composition, design, color, and texture, and other visual qualities, repair, replacement of missing features shall be based on accurate specification of the features. Stained by historic physical or victorial evidence, rather than on conjunctive designs or the availability of different architectural elements from other structures.
Thank you for reading those off. And so, Kimberly, as far as, you know, working with the gentleman here and the applicant, you're the, all that information, he will be able to kind of get back with you?
Yes.
Understanding the processes, okay?
It'll take me probably a year to do all of the mess for the hearing, and then I start sending stuff out. I will be sending an email of the denial, as well as a certified cop, paper copy as well, just so you have a heads up, I'm available for questions and through email, so if we can schedule a phone conversation, as well, we can do that too.
Yeah. Thank you, sir, truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting so long to, we were the first person to hear.
Yes.
And the application number six is tentative to team North High Street. Uh, this application is to change the manstare brick to a flat brick, update the exterior of the building to a more modern design, include the inside of the step棚, windows, panels, glass, brick, and lighting. Expand the structure, behavior, less built-in addition, install the generator and enclosure to the west of the building. Place a dumpster enclosure at the northwest of the block. Modifications are going to be made to the parking space, landscaping is also going to be added around the site. And in future application, graphics, I included commissioner comments from the July thirteenth hearing. And just as a quick note, the effective year built is nineteen eighty-eight, so staff does not consider this a contributing structure. Commissioners at the business meeting were supportive of the application, and HBO staff does caution against the use of ivy so close to the building. Regardless of the building stage, staff will keep this building in good condition, ivy can damage exterior materials as it plumb. Questions for the commission to consider is, are there too many different siding materials, or are contrasting materials appropriate for the sign? Staff does recommend approval as submitted, any and all clarifications to be submitted to staff for review and approval, preparations of certificate. Basis for recommendation is city code thirty-one sixteen point eleven, the standards for alteration. And I will note, I have the material samples here, if you can please take them. I was supposed to get them to Brad at the business meeting, and he didn't show up, so they are great, but I'd like to get guys to have a gap.
I just thought it'd be a nice gift.
I actually have people reading examples of stuff, it's sitting on my desk, and a very interesting part of information.
So can you state your name and get you sworn into?
Jonathan Grove, architectural architects.
Jeff Boxer, back with House Health.
Thank you, do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you for having us again, thanks for your time. Um, just really, work back from our August meeting, just a couple things to note, based on your comments, we've, we've looked at operations to flip the dumpster location to the northwest corner away from Star, that was a conversation from last, last month, again, kind of took the landscape being to fit. Um, and then really from an IV, kind of take it out all, just as a not starter, so. That kind of addressed all the conversations from the August, August meeting.
And the commissioners all received the public comment assault, correct?
All right, any thoughts, as well, any mission thoughts? I think they've been responsive to pretty much all of the concerns over a line, um, as well as the adjacent neighbors. I think that was kind of a big. Kind of moment or pivot, I think a month and a half ago, uh, when the site plan was reorganized. So the only thing I would say is, is, you know, you solve one neighbor's problems, but I'm sure the people that have the penthouses that have decks. Aren't going to be too happy about this thing. Honestly. Possible. I, I think probably honestly. So I think that's something that you guys need to contend with. Any other? Concerns or just overall?
Okay, they were responsive to everything we asked, asked about.
Okay. All right, so motion whenever the team is ready.
Oh, it's easy. Uh, motion on, uh, application V V two two oh eight zero one nine one zero one five north high street. Uh, motion to approve, uh, estimated.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Thank you everyone. Appreciate it.
The applicant for one oh nine Hubbard is not here, correct? Thank you. Okay, so we're going to have to circle back to number seven. I didn't see it his turn on your face, but I wanted to be a hundred percent sure.
Yes.
He doesn't have behind somebody. Yeah, for number, oh, I'm sorry. For number eight, yes.
Yes.
Yep. Come on up. So this application is to replace the existing windows on the first, second and third floors with the weather shield. On them have windows, the premium series is going to be fruitless. Uh, the twelve floor door instinct glass windows are to be restored. Commissioner comments from the June eighth meeting have been included. Uh, commissioners at the business meeting did not see a justification for why those two windows need replaced. We were still supportive of the basement and attic windows being replaced. H B O staff has reviewed, uh, the file. There is a twenty ten approval to install new stone windows. Uh, but there were no applications regarding the repair of the windows. If the commission and applicant are unable to come to consensus, uh, H B O staff did volunteer a first site visit, which has been completed. And this is similar to the three five eight Wilbur Avenue application. And staff, um. Does recommend approval of the application of the condition that the existing windows are repaired as needed to match existing. Based on the. Site visit of the windows were generally in good condition. The sills were in good condition as well. Nothing. Jumps out at the moment and it's been a couple weeks. I apologize. But basis for staff recommendation is city code thirty one sixteen point eleven, the standards for alteration as well as the amendments to the guidelines for window replacements.
Thank you, Kimberly. Can you state your name and get you sworn in?
Uh, Matt.
Perfect. Do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, man. Welcome back.
Exactly. Welcome back. Thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, it wasn't so. Um. After the site visit, um, I wasn't there. Uh, I talked to the contractor who. Said he was there. Um. And. The biggest concern, some repair, especially the first floor, uh, can be repaired. The biggest concern we have is, um, the second floor. Windows where the most of them are inoperable. I think I. Talked to you plenty of times of damage. I mean. I can see the damage, uh, the contractor. That works on the project says he cannot repair, especially the second floor windows. Uh. The commissioner has seen it. Uh, I'm not going to argue, uh, the commission's opinion. The. Biggest concern is the, about the windows not being repairable. And it's majority of the windows of second floor. Now, um. The repair of the windows is just going to be. Too extensive. Uh, to repair. It seems like at that point, we're missing the point. What's going to be new? We're going to keep the glass. Replace the entire frame and the window. Uh. I don't, I don't know how that could be justified. Uh, so. With the commission's opinion, I'm hoping that at least the commission approves the second floor. Uh, window replacement at the middle. And another question I had about the original approval for the basement and attic windows. If I read it correctly, I think only the basement windows, uh, were called out for approval. But if I'm interested.
I'd have to check if. Well, double check the motion.
Just. Yeah. I'll go ahead and buy some good.
Yeah, and that's not something I can check right this moment, so.
Okay. All right, so that'll be checked. So we're looking at this application, so that, thank you and I appreciate it. Um, so any thoughts? Um, so I think we're concentrating. This one is on the first and second floor, uh, only for this application. I think what's being stated is that. Uh, a repair, um, is being recommended in lieu of replacement. And the application right now, I think is for, is replacement across the board.
I guess I will last speak to this one, so, um, you know. Again, being consistent, um. Staff did see the windows, we, you know, sort of went back and forth about it a few times. Um, I'm inclined to go with staff's recommendation to repair the windows, um, to match existing on the first and second.
Thank you, Reed.
I agree.
Okay.
I would agree also.
Okay.
This is, again.
Yeah, understandable. I, I would agree too as well. I was just kind of thinking about that next step, you know, and I just kind of thinking about like. You mentioned, um, you know. Um, kind of the contractor being able to have some evaluation and go into that process and just kind of breaking it down, not necessarily the second floor. But there probably are a variety of different levels of, you know, conditions of each windows.
Absolutely. That's why that's different.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, again, I don't know if that step is, you know, that step can be taken, you know, as the repair is going and if you run into a, a, a one window or two windows that. Really challenge you of being able to come back and kind of work through those, but I, I think that there's consensus that. You know, the replacement i- is, is, is not, and we were looking at more of a repair for both the, the first and the ground, I mean, the first and second floor. So. I just kind of moving the application forward, I, I think what we would, what we would be doing is kind of voting on that. And most likely to probably be a denial of the application. But I'm, I'm presuming that you, you still want to go ahead and move it forward in that manner.
So one thing to add quickly is, uh, we commented earlier, have you reached out to Columbus landmarks to see if you can get a recommendation on a contractor that can work on these windows?
I hope not.
So that might be.
I think that's the, uh. The disconnect that we had with the owner of the, the previous meeting.
Okay, I mean, that would be an option to allow it to continue rather than deny it and, um, should. But it's really, I guess it's, I, I guess I would leave it up to you on which, which right.
Uh, so I guess, uh, based on today's recommendation, it seems like. It's a window by window basis, uh, so. At this point, if the contractor comes up to a point where a window is not repairable for a specific one condition. Uh, that's another submission.
That's true. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. Is there, Kimberly, is there, I don't see another vehicle.
Well, how long can we leave this open, right? It's, it's application for, can we leave it open? Like if she wants to take, you know, the time to work, work on the windows, they find one, can it go into the existing application or?
Well, I think she needs a C O A to even start to work.
Oh, okay, maybe C O A to do anything. Okay.
Okay, so I think that's the key is.
Yeah, so we have.
Yeah, we don't also want to keep kicking something down.
Yeah, that's correct, I get that.
And because we want to help you move it forward.
Okay.
Repair things like that.
At the same time, we don't want to hold it. We just want to either replace it or fix it and finish the project. Um, at the same time. What is acceptable to be considered a repair? Can we replace, uh, the sashes of the door and keep the frame? Uh, or it, it doesn't mean just. Send, uh, uh, repaint.
Probably varies window by window depending on. Um. Projects I've done in the past, like with me and a window, it's like, okay, this sash needs, like, it's completely rotten, it needs to be rebuilt, so all new. Maybe it's just the lower sash, maybe it's just the upper sash, or this one, the sashes are okay, but the buttons need to be replaced, so it's a.
Exactly, just like in the picture, it's obviously, uh, the frame of the window is gone. It's filled with some filler and.
So I would presume, Kimberly, you have those requirements and those constraints based upon the repair. Right, would you, would you have something that would be somewhat of a framework for helping?
I could hopefully put something together. I'm thinking right off the top of my head, my mind is going like, I know the updated guidelines have a very flushed out. Requirement for what it is to be, you know, before we start looking after placing a window.
Okay. So I, I mean, I think today you, after today, you would be able to, you know, work with Kimberly just to try to understand what that C O A means.
Okay.
Uh, in terms of repair.
Keep in mind, Emma did give us a document that kind of do all the windows, you know, which ones, you know, would be replaced or repaired.
Understandable. But it seems like what's the application currently is the application is repair only for the first and second. I, I guess I'm a little confused in.
No, the, it's a. Uh, the basement and the attic where I probably did. I think the question is about the language of the attic is called out or not. Uh, so the application is only about the first and second floor.
Okay. 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 So as far as application, so should we? I guess I'm.
Wait, so we didn't split, this hasn't been split already?
No, it, it has been, it has been.
Okay.
I think this is the component that was continued.
Yes.
Which was specifically the ground floor and the second floor.
So the application is to replace the, the windows as noted, not every window in the first and second floor, right? Um, that's the application, but we could, uh, approve as a repair, not a replacement.
That is, that's, that's how I see it.
Hmm.
Okay, perfect. So could we, could we, should we vote on? Or should there be a motion for repair only? That would give you the opportunity of working with Kimberly for C O A. To, you know, to, to repair as needed?
Yes, if we, if I may ask, that would be great. And then, uh, if I could still. Keep the ability to come back for approval if individual windows.
That's correct.
Indeed.
Yeah.
It would, so how it would work is we will, um, approve based on repair and then I'll issue the C O A. And you can reach out to Columbus landmarks or whoever to check about repair and if something does come up. We kind of reevaluate windows one by one, sort of our will as a group, but specific.
Okay.
Windows, because what we don't want in front of the commission again is something that they've already seen, so.
Yeah.
Kind of a variation on a theme.
Okay. Very helpful. Thank you for talking ahead for me. All right. So is there a motion? Yeah, I got this one.
Uh, thank you. Uh, motion on application V V two two oh four zero zero eight, uh, one forty butles avenue. Uh, motion to approve the application, uh, with the, uh, stipulation that the window, the existing windows be repaired, uh, not replaced. On the first and second, thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Just perfect. Kimberly, is there any need for kind of working doing, do you need anything else related to that?
No, I know if there's something monkey with the previous motion, um, we are back next month for the slate roof, so I might just slide something into there because we're already.
Okay, just want to be sure you had enough information that you needed for your next step. Okay, yeah, perfect. All right, so a vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking to me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, likewise, thank you.
Right? So application number nine is one fifteen to one nineteen west second avenue. This is to install the one over one windows in the year of eighteen after the removal of the awnings. Uh, the windows will be from the proof windows list and as well to tooth and impact the brick painting, the brick to match the existing. Measures at the business meeting, our customer H B O staff confirmed here in the figure property. So I've included the nineteen oh one, nineteen twenty one and nineteen twenty two to fifty one sandboard maps of the materials. So a two story porch on the front and back can be seen starting in nineteen twenty one sandboards. Uh, the earlier structure from the nineteen oh one sandboard appears to have been demolished to construct duplex. Both the nineteen twenty one and nineteen twenty two to nineteen fifty one sandboard maps show two story porches on the front and rear of the structures. Uh, commissioners have briefly mentioned installing doors and cave openings which relate balconies is similar to the front. Uh, would this be an appropriate solution or would the applicant be able to install a window if the size of the opening, uh, is retained? Uh, staff recommends approval of the application with the condition that the original opening sentence is retained. Basis for recommendation is city code thirty one sixteen point eleven, the standards for alteration.
All right, thank you, Kimberly. Just want to be sure. All right, um, can you state your name and then get you sworn in?
Julie Bull.
Thank you. Do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Julie. Um, so if, I know you're going to touch specifically on. But can you just? To help some of us too as well, can you just kind of touch on? Like a little understanding of there's been some sequence of events that might have been out of sequence of approvals. And. Uh, what doors and what's happening, just based upon some of the imagery. Specifically doors and transoms, things like that too as well.
So we, um, we originally came in because he got a violation order for things that had been done by a previous. Owner of the property. Um, he tried to communicate with him, but he really wasn't able to. Um, so we don't know what was done when, to be honest. Um, we were here before because there were infill door, there was a, well, first there's a weird plywood box on the front. He did take that off thinking it wasn't original. He should have got approval. And then we discovered doors on the front elevation. Um, so we submitted drawings for a Juliet balcony and a door on the front. To be honest, I think it looks a little goofy, but whatever, he, it's approved it, so fine. Um, he's not interested in doing a porch on the front right now. He's not interested in doing a porch on the back right now. Um, he really just wants whatever to do the minimum. Um. What I would say about this property is it has been really modified so many times over the years. There's, you know. Not a whole lot left with the original character, to be honest. Um, I did not think those doors were original on the back just because of the poor brickwood, because of the patching of the brick, et cetera. Um, and the sill wasn't original either that was there. It was clear it was different from. You know, what was done on the rest of the building, so, um. To me, it seemed more appropriate to put windows there than to put doors on the second floor that are never going to go anywhere, but. Leave that up to you guys.
Yeah. Okay. So, I mean, my big thing on this is obviously, you know, getting that carbuncle off the front of the building was a big improvement. Juliet balconies aren't the best thing in the whole world. But I think that we should, I mean, I think all those doors.
But I think that we should, I mean, I think all those doors from and back, you know, first floor should have transoms instead of being filled in. That, that's my big, that's my one thing, if you're going to bring any integrity back to the building, I think that would be one thing that would do it.
I think, well, it's really not part of this order right now, I'm not sure, to be honest, he's interested in spending the money on it right now.
Well, we can say no.
Yeah, you can.
We can say no.
Yeah.
And he might have to spend some more money.
Uh, this is just for the second floor.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, rear is.
To the rear.
Yeah, to the rear, yes.
Yes, the rear, back, second floor openings is the only.
So we've approved this, these bottom doors?
They've been, I don't know, they've been like this.
They haven't been coming up, they were like. Okay, and city hasn't.
No, no.
Come to them either.
Violation.
It's the rear.
Hey, three-one-one is a complete process.
Okay. Well, okay.
And mind you, I'm not three-one-ones. I'm the HBO staff.
For sure.
So I hear you, but.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I know, I, I mean, I, I'd like you to do everything on this window, you know, this, take off those awful railings on the back and do, you know, there's so much you can do, but I'll just say, you can say that about a lot of buildings in Victorian Village and, you know.
So the only, so we're doing the, the two Juliet balconies, what about the windows on the third floor?
We're, right now, the only things we're here for today is the, the back elevation, the two upper openings where it was covered by the awning.
Got it.
Took the awning off.
Hey, you don't have to point like that. Geez, thank you, Kimberly, okay, I get it.
I mean, it was crumbled and it was in.
So, so to be fair though, uh, with Jeffrey's point about the transom, so I'm, I'm, I'm on the rear of the building where the awning is covered, the lower part of the awning is covered, the transom for the bottom doors.
Yeah, do you have a picture?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, it's a tieback.
I'm looking, you could.
Yeah.
My slide set.
Like tieback in the opening, so it clearly is not a finished opening.
Yeah.
So you can see where the, the awnings gave that to. So, uh, I guess it stands to reason, given that it's just the tieback there, uh, that, that, that those transoms really should be part of the violation because the awnings were there.
So this is not a violation?
This was.
Well, this was, um, as they were, as they took off the awning, Julie let me know that this is what they discovered, so we did put in an application to deal with this. And I don't know why, but I thought the transoms and the doors were boarded.
I think they put the tieback there, protect the opening once they took the awning.
Like, yeah, I, I, I remember just seeing a brown board above there, but that could just.
Yeah, there was.
Poor memory playing tricks on me.
So I guess my question would be, what is proposed for, yeah, what's going to go back there?
They can't just do tieback.
Right.
Right now, we're proposing to do any, let's say that, let's, you know, that's up to you guys.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Okay, you're getting, you're getting one side of the bill.
Let's discuss the doors first.
Yes, yes.
So, so what you're saying, you would prefer doors on the second floor?
The masonry opening needs to go, stay within the consistent size, especially if we're not asking you to reopen it, we're asking you to not make it small.
So if we keep it the same size, can we put a window and a panel underneath it, or do you want a door up?
I think a door up. I, I mean, these would have been the same as what were on the front of the house. And yes, he's not looking to fully restore it, but this is one step closer.
Yeah, do we, we're convinced that that's the case, because I, actually what Julie had said about those not being potentially original, that.
That's because if that was a door threshold, it wouldn't necessarily have a stone because it connected to a porch.
That would be kind of like.
And if they want to do a porch, they would have doors and they could do that in future, so fitting it step by step that.
But if, that would have been a threshold rather than a, a window sill, so it's completely consistent that it's wood rather than stone.
I agree.
So.
So, yes, those don't have, um, window sills, stone window sills like the windows because they weren't windows. Um, a second floor porch is not uncommon, it would have had a wood threshold to go out of.
I was actually saying the threshold that's on the front and natural is on the back.
It's a door back.
So that's why I didn't think they were.
Yeah.
So we're talking about doors.
So you want a door and a transom, basically.
Yeah.
Same condition and value.
And just fix it shut.
That's it.
Yeah.
So a similar condition of what's happened on the first, upside of the front elevation.
Do you have an opinion on what kind of door?
I'd say it's what's a.
I mean, half lighting, full light.
I think it should be full light.
I'm sorry.
Like the front, like what you did on the front.
Okay.
So full light.
And quite frankly, I would be okay if they did that little Juliet, um, railing also.
I check, he does.
I mean, just for this.
Oh, oh, yeah, it's just.
So we're saying a full light door with a transom.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and if there's not going to be a Juliet balcony, how are we going to stop the violation? Yeah.
Well, then it becomes another code violation. I mean, it's.
There has to be a railing either the inside or the outside.
Right, either.
You can fix the door shut and then you're not.
But it's. Blast.
You screw it shut, yeah.
Well, it has to be.
It's just like a window that, or, that it's going to be tempered. I mean, so code will not require me to have a railing. Now, if you guys want a railing, that's a different story, but code will not require it.
See, and I think we should say it should match the front if he's doing that. With a door, with a transom and a rail.
I think the tenant would want to be able to.
Uh, that's what I.
I mean, another thing they could do was just have a door and drive over the inside, I think it's.
Say that again.
So they can have the door there that, you know, protects the opening, but of the interior, they could drive all over, so you can't access the door.
Door and a transom, put a door and a transom and then just drive over, would you do that?
Yes, it's, um, you see it sometimes in German village, we do it all on my father's, when people don't want to use their second door, that's what they do.
Yeah. I would get to those, the lightness rooms, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think wide.
So from an aesthetic perspective, I mean, this, what are we, what are we asking for?
I think a door and a transom.
Door and a transom. And.
I'm okay leaving the railing on.
Okay, that's, I'm good, great.
Okay. Door and a transom. Now, how do we want to deal with the transom area that's covered in tieback above the two lower rear doors?
So since it's not part of the application, you could just tell the applicant that they need to bring their solution back to staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That way they've got time to figure out what they might do and all that. The commission would like to see a transom go back in there.
That's what would be appropriate.
I just don't.
Yep, okay, I'm okay.
And if you're going to be driving on the inside, will we do that as well? Since that's something typically you can see through a door or window, we just need to have that on record that that's, you know, they're doing, that's original opening, um, for the standards for alteration. If somebody wanted to go back and later to reopen everything up, we have that on record, that, that's something they proved.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
Okay, so we won't, we won't address that right now, okay?
But you will note that they're fixing that door shut. Please.
Yes.
We had something in Italian that was a door that led to nowhere because there was no addition out and out. That was a, a lot of discussion that we have to kind of account for safety as well, we can't just have a door not going anywhere.
Got it.
Would, would we be able to have the balcony staff, staff approved if I can get him to agree to that?
I'm okay with the commission's okay, as long as we see match the style, we'll let us off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. See you.
I think it gives you some options.
Thank you so much, Julie, all right, is, uh, can we have a vote?
Uh, I will, I will give it a try.
Perfect.
Uh, motion on application VB two-two zero-nine zero-zero-seven, uh, one-one-five West Second Avenue. Uh, to approve the application with the following modifications, uh, the two rear, uh, do, uh, openings on the second floor uh, will be filled with a full light door with transom, uh, in each locations and doors will be fixed closed. Uh, and the applicant will be required to, uh, come back to the commission with, uh, a, a solution for the, or come back to staff for sta, uh, for staff approval for the openings, uh, above the two, two, uh, doors, uh, on the rear for the, in the transom area. I get it.
So is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So just discussion, so do we want to say anything about the Juliet balcony that if that option comes about?
Do you need? Yes, okay, uh, and, uh, further add that if the applicant chooses to do a Juliet balcony, that, uh, assuming the style matches the style on the front, that that can be staff approved.
Do you agree to the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think we have everything covered now, okay. Perfect, here we go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Appreciate it. You're so patient. You weren't like, hey, graduate school.
Always.
All right, we've got.
That will turn him to.
Uh, so we have to, uh, hopefully by six fifteen, so we've got one more application at the moment, which is number eleven, eight seventy Madison Avenue with the rear. This is, um, the, uh, new construction to construct a three-unit building. Uh, the two options are proposed, one with a flat roof, the other with a pyramid roof. Siding is to be the one by ten, true exterior quality ash tiam siding and hardy siding or hardy shingle siding and remove the flat walnut tree planting tuning trees and install two parking paths between the existing house and proposed row house. I've included the commissioner comments from the July thirteenth meeting. Commissioners at the business meeting requested a necessary study of the original height versus proposed heights. Uh, surrounding structure heights might be helpful too, but the commission recognizes that this property has some conditions going on. The applicant has provided the updated drawings, which have been included in the material. And per city code thirty-one sixteen point twelve, the standards for reconstruction where brick predominates in nearby structures, new construction shall be a brick, if brick predominates in nearby structures, new construction should be a frame or big gap, meaning predominates, brick shall be preferred. HBO staff has included a map of approximately block radius from the property. Commission should deciding, should discuss siding materials. Uh, commissioners also need to discuss the group style, uh, would be as well, uh, would be best in unique what's there as we are losing the structure or is something as proposed okay as well? Um, staff recommendation is to offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine proposal for a, um, view of future meeting. Basis for recommendation is thirty-one sixteen fourteen, standards for demolition, thirty-one sixteen point twelve, the standards for construction.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, could you state your name and get your sworn in?
I'm so funny.
I'm Gary Alexander.
Do you agree to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Very. Thank you. Turn it over to you, yes.
The, um, based on your feedback, when we came for you earlier and you're proposing a bit more on a building, we've come back with two options that are, um, traditionally derived, the, the proposed building matches the footprint of the existing building. Existing building is a small, three unit, three townhouses. So we're not drawing to build something larger than what's there or increase potential wherever you want to decide as much as big a building. The height is very similar in either proposal. Um, the existing building to the top of the parapet front is about twenty-one eight. Um, the flat roof option, um, is a little taller, it's, it's about twenty-three nine than the earlier building, but that's because the building code requires the parapet, and the parapet, uh, drives some of the height of this. The building with the roof, the pitched roof at the fascia is about twenty feet, so it's a little lower at the facia, at the peak of the roof, it's about twenty-six four, or it's twenty-six feet. So they're, they're both really close to, uh, blocks there before. Uh, the closest building to the south is a framed building. It's a building that's clad in a good shape, a wood shingle. The exposure of that shingle is approximately eleven, what, inches, it's gray and color. Um, across the alley, the two buildings that face it are clad in wood shingles as well. One of them has wood shingle plus culture still. And behind the building, the existing building on the parcel proportion of that building faces the back of our proposed building as final siding over, um, probably originally sleeping porches back. So, um, in the immediate environment of the alley, oh, and directly across the north is a garage, it's made of rock face block. And so in our earlier proposals, we were going to duplicate the rock face in the parts of the foundation that were exposed. Since the closest buildings are framed, we thought it was logical to use framed, also because the building is so small, we, we barely have twelve feet in terms of internal width of each, in each unit, that using brick as near increases wall thicknesses, which further makes the honesty narrow. So, um, that's another reason why we're trying to avoid using, using on the structure. Um, there are two different porch options, I think it was communicating to us earlier that you would prefer porches versus can weaver roof covers. So their porch is similar, somewhat similar to what was there. The, um, pyramidal roof or the slope roof has a gabled front porch, the middle of the front porch articulated with the gable roof, focusing a little bit more center. Um, the, the rear of the unit's second floor can weavers over the first, footprint is a little bit larger since we're trying to get two bathrooms, one bedroom on the second floor. Um, provides a little protection at the back scoop by having that, having the can. The building code on the alley side, because we are very close to the property, the existing building encroached over the property. We are right within interest of the property, so as a result, we can't put open it. So one of the proposals that we presented today shows a way of breaking up the siding with some banding and that siding bit, that side of it. The, the materials, I'm, I must have confused, um, some of the, some of the information that was presented, because the materials that, um, Kimberly just quoted were from a earlier proposal, we're not thinking of using a channel siding here. I don't think it's appropriate in the styles of the buildings that we're looking at today. Uh, we're proposing just a lax siding, probably a hardy siding, either, one of the two drawings shows a five and a half inch, six inch exposure, excuse me, the other one shows a narrow exposure of about three and a half. Um, we've tried to articulate the openings a bit, there's a proposed crown at the top of the casing of the windows. One of them has paired windows on the first floor, another one just has a pretty. So that's a little bit about the two options and we'd like some feedback.
Thank you. So I like, uh, I like scheme one with the porch without the, the centerpiece. Um, I'm just wondering, because of that alley condition, is it possible to maybe break those façades up with, uh, some board and battening vertical and some horizontal? And maybe even on the front also? So it doesn't read as just this big flat surface, you might have a little bit of cadence there. That's just a thought that I have. I think it would look much better.
Okay, go back to that good funding then.
Hmm.
We gotta go back to the good funding.
Oh, I don't think that, I, I think, I think going vertical and horizontal is not.
Same.
It, I don't think that's a big, that's not going to break the bank.
I mean, if the goal is a little bit more articulation, I, I can, I certainly can do that. I, I am, sit on a review board as well and seeing a lot of board and battening. It seems pretty trendy, uh, in certain settings, so I, I I, I think your goal of breaking up the alley side, we can fly with it. And I think that's, that's a good criticism of applying, well, I would prefer not to because I'm not sure how to make the one hour fire rating work. I would prefer not to, because I'm not sure how to make the one hour fire rating work. We have to drive over the windows, we have done that in other historic districts, but having the entire wall being raided and a window in it, I don't think.
I mean, I'm just saying, if that, as that, as our alleys become more sophisticated, it's a walking, it's something that you actually experience. And that huge, huge surface, something has to be done with it. I, I just.
We can bring you some other.
That's, that's my only thing, I think the rest of it's fine.
One thing to note, I do like option one better, but the paired windows on the first floor, I don't think are appropriate. Pump that one to you with the.
Yeah, I like the not screwed version.
Right. I know we've had that come up before. But it looks like, basically, you take the first, first floor of the other building, or the, have the fenestration in that one, and put it on the other building. So, but other than that, I think this is coming, coming a long way, so, but I think it's going the right direction.
Yeah, I agree, scheme one with the low slope roof, I think is more appropriate to this neighborhood with where this building was. And the comment about the first floor windows not using the paired ones. Encourage you to look more, a little more at the detail at the top of the building, just fitting in with the neighborhood. There's usually something going on at the top of the building, it's just a flat board.
Yeah, right now, I know the drawing's small. We've started that, right now it's going to close to at least three different trims to make something like a cornice up there, so, but I, it's not where it should be yet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it needs to be a full decorative cornice because it's not an old building, but it, it needs to have the top to it.
Agreed.
So, I'm, I'm interested in the fenestration condition. So when you apply scheme two's window to scheme one, how that balances out? It's going to be quite interesting. The amount of transparency, I, I think in scheme one is, is, that would be desirable. So, kind of be interesting on how those kind of get paired together from a proportion standpoint. I would agree with everything that the commission, commissioners are saying. Is there a possibility of, you know, a subtle one, I should say, it's a triptych or there's three bays on the side elevation? So, is there like two that stays up and one slightly drops? Just to get some variation in the facade to, that you're kind of looking. The other one is, I, I do like scheme one, just given the little kind of bulge that happens on the second floor as well. It seems like it's more appropriate with that line, with that scheme. Is there a possibility of getting a smaller window on that, on that, that lower rear elevation? I don't know if that addresses an interior kitchen or.
Yeah, it's planned for. We did it one time and then there was some shuffling of things in the plan. And we did it one time, that window right there, and that's, probably it's possible.
Okay. Not a big deal, I was just, just more of a reaction. I didn't really concentrate on the plan. And then the last one is, is there going to be some, like when you think about that porch on that first scheme one, when that advances, will there be dividers or something like that that happens between units at the handrails? Or is this all one consistent open porch?
My, my preference would be dividers with a handrail height, not walls as the dividers. So you can see across.
Okay.
What I'm seeing nodding, that's.
I agree.
Okay, I sense, I sense.
It just had to do with the portion of that column and how that's detailed. And then if it's going to have something heavy hanging on it, just balance that back out. So, as you continue to refine it, but that's, that was only the observations that I had. Anything else?
So, I'm going to say something. I wanted to go back to the, all the pretty colors, because I did take time to go through and look at material around here. So this, per city code, this is standards for new construction and with the brick predominates. So, this is our structure. Ladies and gentlemen, what is all around? That's brick. HBO's standpoint is this should be a brick construction. And I've heard a lot of likes, we don't like things, we base our review on code. Please keep that in mind.
Well, it's funny you say that, because when I went there myself, that was my first reaction, was like, we've presented a lot of freight buildings, but it's a lot of brick.
Yes.
So, with that understanding, I mean, I, I had always preferred the brick, but, you know.
Don't frame buildings occur mostly in settings like this in the alleys where we have.
Yes.
That's why it's not a.
Right, it's, it's not a deal breaker, but I, I mean, if I had to pick one, then I, you know, I would pick, I'd pick brick in this, I mean, it was a brick building, right? I mean, keeping that in mind as well. But I, I don't, you're right, I don't think it's a deal breaker.
I don't think so either.
It's very much a secondary structure on a small alley.
Yeah, but if you're looking at what some of the structures are on the alley, some of them are a little more kind of building, so triplexes, not like the pods, but they're a bit brick. I'm just making that point.
Okay, understandable. I was just trying to remember the, the conversation that got us to this point. That's all. Anything else? Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys.
And then if we can go back to number seven real quick and continue that one to the next meeting, since our applicant is not here. I think we have some things to discuss on that one.
Yes.
That's right. Motion to continue, we'll look at application number seven.
Make a motion to continue item seven of the VB 2208015, which is 109 Hubbard Avenue. Until you go to the next meeting.
So, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
How about that?
All right, I do have one piece of new business. We are fully seated again. That went through, I believe, last, it was past Tuesday. I will be training the new member of the commission on Wednesday, but he is unable to start until November.
Well, let's just hope it lasts. We're in the middle, we're in the middle of this great resignation or whatever they call it. We can only have it for four weeks, and it's the four of us again. I'm just saying.
Hey, some people are on vacation, so they plan to run the actual hearing. Their scheduled hearing.
We're out of summer now, so people aren't ever back here.
Yes.
We're at a dinghy, we're all gone.
I will come in November, but I'm at a presentation conference.
Oh, then it's the holidays, then we can't. Yeah.
But we will tackle the holidays when the holidays come. Would you want to adjourn the meeting so we're not still on?
Yes. Motion to adjourn. Hello? Done.
Okay, so we.
Make about you to adjourn.
So who's that?
Second.
There, done.